Alter order, this meeting of the City of Sebastian Planning and Zoning Commission for June 6th, 2017. Please rise for the pledged allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Roth.
Here.
Mr. Simmons is excused. Ms. Cottonburg.
Here.
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Reyes.
Here.
Mr. McManus.
Here.
Mr. Kieselboch.
Here.
Mr. Huguen.
Here.
Mr. Alvarez.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons is excused this evening, he is an alternate, so we will not require a substitute You have all had the opportunity to review the minutes for the meeting of June 1st. Are there any additions or corrections?
I would like to add before we go to the minutes that you mentioned we were starting the June 6th meeting, and it's July 6th.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
And I have no changes to the meeting minutes, although I was not here, but they looked like they were put together very well.
I would make a motion that the minutes to the June 1st, 2017 meeting be approved as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? They are approved. The next order of business this evening is a discussion of the future development of vacant parcels located on the east side of Indian River Drive, and a consideration of any amendments.
Hello, Commissioner, this matter was brought up by Councilmember Dodd at the June 14th City Council meeting, and it is being brought before you with the consensus of City Council to just start a discussion and dialogue regarding development on the east side of Indian River Drive on those parcels, consideration of how we see the city developing those, what type of intensity, what type of use, not necessarily uses in the zoning districts, but do we want to just see commercial development on that side based on tax value that it would bring, or residential. This is, what we put together for you is not an all-inclusive list of developable properties on the east side of Indian River Drive, this was just some properties that staff felt were developable, that could come in with a site plan in or a residential structure, and we gave you the zoning districts of those properties and the sizes, and copies of the applicable zoning districts. Mr. Dodd is here to let you know what his concerns are, what he'd like the board to consider, and I'm going to welcome Councilmember Dodd to the meeting and ask him to speak.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to address you. As, I think as Dory mentioned, at the meeting in June, the first meeting in June of the council, I raised the issue about looking at the zoning usages on the property east of Indian River Drive, and Mr. Griffin asked her to invite me to meeting, probably because he was confused about what I said, and you know, you guys all have remembered me, I sometimes have a habit of saying things that can confuse people, but I think he just wanted me to kind of clarify my comments to the council. At that meeting, I asked the council for a sense on their feeling about whether we should consider zoning or use changes on the east side of Indian River Drive, primarily because I was concerned that there's a small number of property that's developable there, and that that property, if it's developed as a high-density, primarily residential, it could be detrimental to the advantage of the citizens of the city. The council did agree that it was worth pursuing, there was not any type of an agreement that there, that whatever changes come across or approved, they just agreed it was worth pursuing to do that. I will like to make sure you understand, I'm not here as an official representative of the council, I'm here because Mr. Griffin asked me to come in and kind of explain the vision that I, as I presented to the council, and so this isn't any type of a council agreement to any change that you're going to make or going to propose. The staff presented a pretty good, have presented to you a relatively good breakdown of that property. There's property on the east side of Indian River Drive that is both standalone, which means they only own property on the east side, there's a lot of it that also is joined with property on the west side of Indian River Drive. So in reality, when you look at the property east of the road, you're also probably looking at the property on the west side of the road, in order to be able to come up with ways to incent and disincent development in that process. Once again, there's a limited number of spaces, the best interest of the city is, I believe, for us to limit high-density, non-commercial development on the east side of the drive, I'll talk in a minute about why I think that needs to be done. And I think the most important thing that came out of the council meeting when we talked about this were two words, those two words are incent and disincent, or discourage and encourage, one of the two. The land development code can discourage development that is not consistent with the vision that the city has, and encourage development that is consistent with that. It's also possible to encourage development on people who own partials on both sides of the road, so that they do what on the east side, the work that is more consistent with the city wants by providing them incentives on the west side. I think there's lots of things that can be done in that regard. And what we're looking at is to discourage high-density residential development on the east of the road, primarily condominiums that block the road off, and to encourage development for more low-density, commercial, and mixed-use property. We have to think about the river as being our commercial hub in the city. In reality, if, I've heard many times, and I think a lot of you have heard many times, people talk about the downtown of Sebastian. Well, Indian River Drive is our main street, it's not called Main Street, but that is the downtown of the city. That whole area that's two miles long, that runs from the park down to about Jackson Street, is reality, that would be considered the downtown for Sebastian. And what we want to do, I think, what the city would like, needs to try to propagate, is more mixed-use, commercial, and residential property development there that facilitates that downtown hub, and makes that a more practical use for the entire citizenry of the city. Two things that are going to come up, though, you're going to hear people talk about property rights, and certainly individuals have the property rights, and have the right to develop a piece of property that they own, but I want you to remember that the land development code, that green book from cover to cover, is a definition of the citizens' property rights for the City of Sebastian. That defines the property rights that the citizens exercise over development within the city. So if something is done by changing that document to enhance or to define the property rights of the citizens, and it's done with care, then it doesn't, it isn't necessarily anti the property rights of an individual to a piece of property that's there. So I think many of you heard me at the time I was on the planes, the only commission talking about property rights being a two-way street. Well, the land development code, as I said, actually defines the property rights for the citizens of the city, and that's the place in which we can define ways to encourage development that runs along a line that the citizens would be better served with, and to discourage development that is, for the same regard. Also, timing is an issue, and the reason I say that is, the minute you begin to discuss a topic like this, the soothsayers start. And so the disinformation will come out, people will say that the Plains zoning commission is going to do this, they're going to do that, and they're going to do this. So the longer it's drawn out in discussion, the more, the more things will come out in an effort to smokescreen and trying to kill any type of a change that you're taking. So this isn't something that can go on for a long time, there's a real issue with timing and trying to get your deliberations completed, get the modifications that you choose to make to the land development code documented, and submitted to the council, and gain the council to review those, and determine which, if any, that they will approve, because it stops the soothsayers from trying to use the rumor mill to make it sound like that you're going to, you want to do something that you're not wanting to do. I think most of you that were here four years ago, or five years ago, when we talked about this before, will remember how many times it was said that we were going to stop residential development in the CRA, and in reality, that was nothing that was talked about by the commission to do that. But that was a way for people to try to direct a smokescreen in front of what we were trying to do as a commission, what the commission was trying to do, so. Once again, I'm not here as an official representative, so I can't address specifics, but if anyone's got any questions, I'll try to, I'll try to address those, so. Give me any questions.
Any questions? Thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you.
I have, leave it to me, I have a question. In your deliberations, when looking and considering this, did you notice that foster care and group homes are, in some of the, well, in all three of the categories, permitted uses?
The council did not talk about any specific issues, and that's something that I would feel uncomfortable talking about with you guys, because the way that the process is supposed to work is you're supposed to go through that and define what you think are appropriate uses, and then the council deliberates that. So there was, the only discussion that took place between the council members and I when I brought this up, was it is, it is not improper for us to discourage certain types of development, and that it is certainly proper for the city staff to spend time, and for the P&amp;Z to spend time, to look at this issue and determine whether they think there's changes that need to be made. So as far as specific changes in specific categories, no, we didn't talk about any of that, no.
Okay.
Okay.
I was just curious if there was any motivation in that area, thank you.
Do you give us any suggestion, are you leaving on us to make some changes?
Yeah, the suggestion was that you guys can make the changes that you feel comfortable doing, and the only reason that I talked about timing being an issue, is it's, we all know it's a complicated subject, and the reason that I was very interested in bringing it to the council as east of Indian River Drive, was to try to put a limiter on it, because I think we've all found out one time before, if you make it too broad, it's very difficult to deal with, you can't deal with anything that big. It's kind of like trying to deal with healthcare, you know, if you deal with all of healthcare, you see the problems that the federal government has to try to deal with that issue, okay? So we can't deal with anything that broad, you have to deal with something a little bit smaller, and then maybe you take baby steps, and you move forward and do something else with that.
See, the land development code for this district is very strict, and all these properties are very small, so nothing could be done according to that code on these property. So my suggestion is, any property is smaller than quarter acre should be exempt.
Okay, that's something you guys need to deal with, that I don't want to, I can't be involved in that conversation.
Since we're in discussion, I'll comment on that. It is my vision to see a boardwalk along that shoreline connecting all these restaurants, and maybe kiosk along these smaller lots, they can barely fit a building on.
Yeah.
It's very true of Mr. Dodd, this area is our tourist attraction, and it's what brings revenue to the city. There is many vacant lots along that run where maybe some of these residential lots, they can create some land leases, commercial maybe, and put some kiosks there, where they can sell like sunglasses, or you know.
If you guys are going to start talking about the specifics, then I'm going to leave.
Am I going to join us?
I think that's perfectly appropriate, thank you.
And I think the intent was to get the discussion started, because whatever is as a recommendation of City Council.
You got to roll it now, because.
Yeah, he'll get to discuss as a City Council.
I love this area out here, and.
And we thought you missed us.
Oh, I do miss you, I'd love to be involved in the conversation, but I don't think it'd be appropriate to do that. I just want to leave you with one thought, if you remember the bed and breakfast that was turned down, and the reason it was turned down was because of back-out parking, having to back out on Indian River Drive, not because the building, which we, it didn't fit the lot, but not because of that, because there's nothing in the code to stop that, and the only reason that it was turned down was because there was no way to safely exit that parking place onto Indian River Drive. So think about the land development code, its inability to stop something like that, even though that was not necessarily an attractive or a proper use, it had to be something as simple as not being able to safely exit the parking that did that. And so that's very difficult, just think about the staff having to deal with that when someone walks the door and says, "I want to do this," and they have to look at the land development code and decide how they can carry on a conversation about what's being done. Just think about the fact that the land development code is the only way, is the only way that the staff, the P&amp;Z, and the council can discourage development, can't do it any other way. We can't just say, "No, we don't like it," not any one of those three entities can just say, "No, we don't like it," it's the land development code that does that. So when you're talking about those changes, just make sure you think that process, and where that fits within that process, all right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And I would just like, I would just like to, thank you, Mr. Dodd, a few of staff's thoughts or clarifications, or understanding of some of the zoning districts for the east side. When Mr. Dodd was talking about intensity, what he meant, now clearly a residential house is one unit, I don't consider that an intense unit, but what he, I think what he was leading to is the properties are zoned RM8, and, which is eight units per acre, and also in the CWR zoning and the CR zoning, any uses allowed in the RM8 district is also allowed in those districts. So in essence, along the riverfront, eight units per acre is the density for that, which means you could have, and these are residential units, though, so this would be a duplex, a triplex, or something that has eight units. The difference is, is a hotel does not involve density, it's just you can have 20, 20 rooms on a same piece of property that's only going to allow eight residential units. So there is difference between density for residential units versus a commercial hotel. Hotels are not based on density. Also, the other thing for staff on the east side, is currently in the CWR zoning district, there are more intense setbacks for residential homes, they're 15 feet from the side yard setbacks. So, and we've had this, and this was actually with one of the bed and breakfast, and what staff will end up, they'll say, "Is there any way for me to get around these really strict setbacks if I'm doing a home?" And staff will explain, though, that if you add, because it is a mixed-use zoning district, if you add some sort of commercial component to your structure, we can give you the commercial setbacks, but the trade-off is, is now you have to do a full site plan, and you have to meet the commercial landscaping, instead of just seven trees per, based on the size, you're doing the full riverfront overlay landscaping, and usually within that site plan, you're having to provide for your impervious area stormwater. This wouldn't be that you could just build a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house, and just say, "Well, this third bedroom's going to be my home occupational," or "I'm going to just run a business out of it," it'd have to be a bona fide commercial space, where if it's 400 square feet, you're providing two parking spaces, you have to meet all of the handicapped accessibility, commercial requirements, we have to look at it as a mixed-use type of thing. So that's one way with these restrictive setbacks for the residents, that you can add another use, you're adding more uses so that you get better setbacks. So I don't know if that's something that the commission wants to look into. I think ideally, we'd like to keep the view of the river visible, and I think that's what Mr. Dodd was talking about, that we can maybe encourage or have some sort of incentive, that if you do use that east side for the properties that have property on both sides of the road, that you use that for your open space, that we can give you some sort of trade-off or benefit, or something, maybe with the setbacks, on your west side, so that we encourage that maybe you just put parking, or your swimming pool, or a gazebo or something on that east side, unless, as Mr. Dodd was also explaining, that that is our commercial corridor, do we, we want to see if we are going to allow on the east side that it is just commercial buildings, and then we may have to tweak the uses in those zoning districts if we don't want. When he said high-density, I assumed that he meant like a townhouse that maybe had six units. There was, on one of the maps, there was three parcels that were right together, the same owner, so if he was to sell those to a developer that bought all three of those, and maybe it was now an acre and a half, that they could put 10 units on that residential type of unit, townhouse apartment type of. And I wasn't sure if Mr. Dodd was, did not want to see that type, or do we want to make sure that if we're going to have something on the east side, that it is a commercial type of structure? So I think those were all of the ideas that staff anyways, we would like you to think about with regards to setbacks and density for the east side.
Okay, this is going to be interesting.
There's other problem for that property, they have the flood zone, which is the biggest problem, and to bring up a certain elevation, so, and that thing could be done there.
Yes, and that has to do with, now that is, and I found this a couple of weeks ago, and I forgot that it had gone back before City Council, the, along the riverfront, there are base flood elevations, and I'm just going to use this example, if you have a flood zone AE7, that means that the finished floor elevation of your structure has to be seven feet, that is from a benchmark, it doesn't necessarily mean from the road, but it's from a benchmark, and in some cases, as like the bed and breakfast, because where the finished floor elevation, it did give them enough room to put that parking underneath the building. They had, at one time, City Council had looked at a different way to measure, not the finished floor elevation, because FEMA is going to require that finished floor elevation to be at seven, we can't change that, but it was where we had measured the, on the east side, you can only have 25 feet tall structures. We measure it the way the code states, is right now it's measured from your base flood elevation, and that's why you could build a two-story house that's 25 feet, that's going to look three stories, because you have that third story, but we're measuring that 25 feet from the FEMA elevation. And they had previously looked at possibly measuring it from the crown of the road, or from an average grade on the property, and at that time, it was, they left it alone and said, "No, we just want to keep it as that 25 feet measured from the finished floor elevation."
Yes, sir.
I think that most of the parcels, a good percentage of them anyhow, on a standalone basis are unbuildable, and you take commercial, by the time you get the setbacks, the parking requirements, the landscaping, you know, you're going to put up a 500 square foot building, and there's no way you can feasibly sell enough products out of that building to pay for it, certainly not pay for the lot. So I think that, first of all, I think each one's going to have to come before the board and stand on its own for various, for variances, but I think the only way they can be used is for residential purposes, unless the lot is connected with a commercial on the other side, and then they might be used, for instance, you might not want it, but they might be used for overflow parking. But as far as putting a structure there, I can't imagine any structure there other than a house, and some of those lots are going to be hard pressed to even get a house on them.
Okay, I think, before we go any further, I'd like to say that I think it's perfectly appropriate that we review from time to time the zoning, because times change and expectations change. Mr. Dodd talked about the property rights being property rights of the citizens of Sebastian, what he didn't mention is private property rights as well, and I know that that will come before us, and I feel very strongly that we need to be extremely careful in, that we don't ever get involved with a taking of private property rights, just because someone happens to own a piece of land that is currently too small to accommodate what we think of as an appropriate structure. It may not have always been too small, as we all know, if you've seen old maps, the river has done a taking of a good parcel of land, and that's not the fault of the person who owns the land. But I think we could be a whole lot more creative with the types of structures that, even on some of these very small lots, I know that I'm really concerned about, in my mind, it wasn't just the safety issue of backing into traffic on that particular property, I was also very concerned with the total number of square footage built on a lot that was smaller than any lot in, for instance, in the Highlands, and I think we could be much more creative with how we use, even for a single-family residence, I see nothing wrong with a single-family residence that might be 1,500 square feet with 500 square feet on each floor. If you've ever been to San Francisco, there's a whole lot of really excellent development that has been developed, skinny, skinny houses, because they have to fit on a small space, but the living is there, and it can be done rather nicely. Also, the idea of, for a commercial use, it doesn't necessarily have to be a bricks-and-mortar structure that occupies the lot 365 days out of the year, it, as you suggested, there could even be the flower cart, sort of, and whether that would be done by a special permit or not, I think that's open to the question and things that we should consider.
There's many lots that are very small that are between these commercial properties that exist already, and that's where I would envision, whereas not a big structure, is maybe a 12-by-12 slab with a placebo-type business on it, selling, you know, tourist stuff, anything, whatever.
So there is a code, because we do get calls quite often from our food vendors, your hot dog people out of the carts, lemonade stands, that ask if they can just set up in the park, or set up somewhere on the riverfront during the weekends. So the code, there is a specific code that says all business must be, must occur in an enclosed building, but the code also allows relief in Article 2 for a temporary use, a special event type of permit, which basically is, okay, you can apply through this permit, you could come in, and this would not be, it's the same permit that we did the flea markets under, it's not that you would get to do it every weekend, but that you could come in a certain time, you'd say you come in for a week, a special weekend, and through this, you don't have to get a business license, and you pay this fee, you let us know if you're going to need any electric, and it's a temporary use, which means you don't have to set up a site plan, you don't have to get a business taxes through this, it's a $200 fee application. So, but based on that code, that may have to be tweaked then about business in an enclosed building, because that is the one that we stand on to then send them to the temporary use permit. So, of course, temporary use is like the flea markets, is only six times a year, it's not something you do every weekend.
That's not what I envision at all, I envision a land lease, a small parcel on these properties, and a building like you see in the malls in the center, kiosks where they are enclosed, and they can be enclosed. There's many of them all over the place, there's boardwalks existing now with these type of businesses on it.
And so something like that, then you would want to waive parking requirements, then? Because if it's a small building, then we have to set up parking in all walkways.
Correct, it's for walk-up type of business, it's for the people walking through there now. The city's already added a lot of parking along that corridor, and I'm sure they probably have vision of more in the future, so. That's the type of commercial I'm looking at. I've even thought in the past of submerged land leases along the waterway there, where you're not even on these properties, then I'm dealing with federal lands, and it's doable. And I'm sure connecting all these restaurants along that run, and this is something that stays low, it's not a big building, although we approved Clams R Us, this, that we had the whole condo association in here, there is, it is doable, so. To say that these lots are dead to commercial, is, I think somebody doesn't have a vision of what it should look like out there, I, that's my vision, I'm sorry, I guess I should.
Yeah, and I think, I think back about, about the Clams R Us, about that, and how we did approve it, because there's nothing we could disapprove about it, but that was going to be a two-story building on that little bitty piece of land there, which was crazy, I thought.
He still, I mean, he started it, I would hope he's going to continue with it, I think that's a great business there, especially in the capacity.
But the size of the property, I mean, the size of the building and all that on that small piece of land, I have no problems with the business, but on that little, small piece of land, we're having trucks going in and out and things like that.
May I make a comment? I've owned at least two retail businesses, and I can't imagine a retail person going there. In order to make a retail business go, you have to have square footage, you have to have inventory, and you have to have turns, and collectively, they determine your gross. And if you have a 12-by-12 building, you know. And if you have a 12 by 12 building, you know, you can't get more, at tops, maybe, 15 to 20% inventory, and they might turn six times. Walmart turns 40, most retail businesses turn between four and six. So, I don't thi, I can't imagine anyone doing their homework and going along with that model, but.
I think that we're, I, what you're discussing, I've seen them, if you've, if you've, if you've done any sailing, most of the, most of the port that you stop at have some very beautiful structures. When they redid Cozumel recently, they are, they're good, solid gazebo structures, they roll down the windows in the evening and lock them up tight, and, and yeah, they turn a lot of product. They turn a lot of product there. So, I think that it behooves us to think outside the box periodically. And if a person wishes to create that kind of business and believes he can make a good living at it, do we deny him just because it doesn't fit our viewpoint? And do we deny the owner of property, the use of his property, just because it doesn't fit our vision?
You have to have a magnet to get people there, though. And right now, it's not there. There are some casual walkers, but the, most of the traffic is going by. And if you have a magnet, you can have smaller buildings, and the kiosks that Mr. Reyes is talking about, that will work. And a reason for people to make that a destination, not a pass-through, that's where I think, you know, we need to focus is something like that. Thinking that's our downtown, it's not ever going to be a pass-through at that point, then. You've turned a corner, and it's now become a destination. Then you can have the, you know, the smaller kiosks if you have a walking public.
So, here, here's a first.
We packed the art show pretty well.
You bet.
I mean, those are kiosks.
Thirty thousand people.
I can picture one of them guys in one of those kiosks selling art.
Here's the first question I'm going to ask you then, with this vision that maybe you've started already, and I think this is what Mr. Dodd is also saying. If we get this going in our CWR zoning district, and you've got a few of these small properties, you've got these businesses, and all of a sudden, then, a residential home goes in the middle of our commercial corridor, we get a couple of homes. Is that something in the CWR, would you like to see how we can get into the code, that we eliminate a residential use on the east side only of, of Indian River Drive?
That's been a big concern I've had.
We still would certainly, because that zoning district covers North Central Avenue and the west side, do we want to maybe take out that residential use on the east side?
Personally, I don't think that it's, I don't think that it's unharmonious.
Would that be taking away a property right? I don't think so, I mean, because we would just say a residential use on that east side for the properties that straddle the road on both sides. And then again, do you want that, we may need to look at that at the CWR. We have that area of the RM eight that does allow that right north of the yacht club, and we have those areas of homes there that is already RM eight and set up for residential. But say from the tiki bar area north, do we want to eliminate the residential use on the east side of Indian River Drive?
That's what my first question is, any property less than quarter acres, so cannot build a residential thing, that you could put a condition in that one.
And, and that may be something that we want to.
This is a great GIS report, but could we get a map of, of full size showing these lots highlighted as it was residential, so we can see how they're contingent to each other, or how, you know. I guess it's in order, the report, but it would be nice to see in overall, so then we can see what we're talking about in a bigger picture. Yeah, kind of.
That, that's my thought, because we're looking at pieces here and there.
I've, I've chucked a lot of pieces, and I can see they're all common owners and between residences, but for the, for overall, for all of us to see, and maybe the public to see what we're talking about, instead of, hey, I'm on that, I'm in that area. So, I think it'll help us a lot, and then maybe we can put it on projector and talk about it.
With these, these lots identified on a zoning map.
Yeah, I've, I've started putting one together myself at work, but I think it'd be better for the city to do it for us.
Well, the, the parcels are spread out, and that's the thing, too. If we want to have a focal point or that magnet to draw, then that's what we need to do, is determine where that is, and put our incentives together based on that, and draw there, and then look at perhaps other areas that are outside of there, and answer the concern about maybe that would be best served by having that remain a possible residential unit, but not within the area we've defined as a key area that we want for our, our primary downtown area.
Well, and if you're thinking of just a key area, don't forget, we've got to try and make it so that we're not, unless you want to come up with a new zoning district.
Yeah, I was going to say, how the.
You know, right now, the easiest part is just to tweak our uses and our setbacks, not, you know, we'd have to, new zoning, changes the comp plan, things like that, it could get very detailed. But it is the plan for the riverfront, if this would, if this is how you want to put that in place.
Another overlay.
Years ago, when this first came up, it was, it was described in a news story as being bubbles, if you, if you recall that, and when I read it, I thought, well, that's the craziest thing I've ever heard of. But the more I see the development, and the more I see changes that have come about in property uses all over the world, the more I see that that makes perfect sense. And, and the idea of, I believe that multiple, multiple properties can of themselves create the magnet that you're thinking of. And that's the idea of, well, Coco Village, for instance, is a good example of it. The art show is a great example of, you don't just go there to get an oil painting, you might also buy glassware and jewelry and all those other interesting things, and maybe you didn't even go there to buy any glassware, but you saw it on the way to the jewelry shop. And I think that that's, again, that's thinking outside the box a little bit, but not very much, because the rest of the world is already doing this, particularly on, on what they, what they call shoehorned properties. They kind of fit in between other major uses, and they can all be very harmonious together. I can remember years ago how neat it was to, for instance, live above the bakery. Well, we don't do any of that anymore, but we probably should. It's a good use of.
And could.
Yeah, it's probably a good use of property.
And looking at a lot of these residential ones that are actually just for the scenery, for the guy on the other side, for the owner, many of them are so small, you're not going to be able to put anything on them, other than maybe if you was to take a few of them and join them together, you could do some kind of little strip thing, so. It may benefit them where their property becomes a little more valuable than what it is right now as a residential piece of property.
The benefit of having the property on both sides of the street, and even if the east side, based on your high, mean high water level, or, or what you actually have over there, is it does count towards your overall density, which means you could get maybe the six acre, six units on the west side, and it does count towards your open space. So, there's, you know, that is the benefit of having that property, even if you couldn't put anything but a dock or a small gazebo on the east side, it's helping towards your density and your development on the west side. But, you know, I think that's what we're trying to figure out, do we want to encourage that so that we don't put anything on the east side, and we just have that nice vista river view, the river view vista? Or do we want to encourage smaller businesses and waive some of the parking requirements so that you get that downtown vision that you're talking about, Mr. Reyes? I just thought of something, too, now, we have, we do have three overlays. We have the riverfront overlay, 512 overlay, which, as I was explaining, when people come in, overlays above and beyond architectural signage and landscaping with the general code. We also have the triangle overlay. And what we did on the triangle overlay is we did not rezone those zoning districts, but they tweaked, just for the boundaries described in the triangle, the different uses in those zoning districts. So, I know there is a portion of that triangle that's industrial. And what they did was they took out, they took out vehicular sales and changed it into interior vehicular sales. The, the idea was, is that we didn't want any car dealerships in the triangle, but it was okay to have a motorcycle dealership where all the motorcycles were inside a building, and you didn't have that outside display area. So, there was, we took that triangle and tweaked, we didn't rezone, but we tweaked the uses within that overlay. And that could be something, maybe, that we have riverfront overlay district bubble A. And in the bubble, we, we, we would define it with certain dimension of the boundaries, and that's where we could tweak some of the uses in the CWR that would either take out the residential or, or create the uses that you're looking for in your vision.
I would, and I don't think there would be any, any difficulty obtaining this, but I would really like to hear from the property owners, how they feel that they would like to see their properties used. Or, I, I, I'm absolutely certain there are some people out there who are flummoxed with owning property, and frankly, I think that the most awful use of property is overflow parking. I think that's just, it's sad. We live in Florida, for goodness sake, you can certainly walk a block.
I think we, we need to have some type of a preliminary plan, though, before we invite other opinions, because if we don't have something, it'll be uncontrollable as far as where the ideas are coming from. May not be, may not be bad, but it'd be tough to control anything. And I think, you know, we're on the idea here of possible, as, as Dory said, and as Mr. Reyes said, you know, the, the bubble areas, that may be the, the, the way to go with it, once we can look at the bigger map and say, gee, there's a spot here, and there's a spot here, and in between, on the west side of the street, there are these businesses that will complement it. But we can't see it right now, without, without a bigger map.
And that, again, is the, do we want to put a lot of, is it something you would want to have a public, that we would send out public notices and have a workshop with the residents to see what they do want, before we put a lot of effort into it, and then get them coming at public hearings, saying, this isn't at all what we vision? I don't know, or, or Mr. Roth could be right, maybe we should at least have the initial, what we may see as changed, and then present it to the public? That's, your decision, too, what you would like to, how you would like to grasp this?
What is, I like that quarter acre idea, that those can be developed into maybe a small retail. What is the code now? It has to be upland, an up, upland of a quarter acre? I mean, some of these lots are out into the waterway, so.
What's in the riverfront now is grandfathered in, that's, those are some old subdivisions in there. Some are platted, some are chunked off pieces, but we look at whatever's there in the size, they're grandfathered in. It's, in your CWR zoning district regulations that you have, when it talks about a minimum size, depth, and width, that's for any new lots that would be created. And there isn't any property down there that I could see would, you know, possibly there's something that would be subdivided into two or three lots, but there really isn't a lot of land that anybody would come in and say, I want to create a bunch of new lots. Then we would have to held them to that size. So, there is a minimum size, I think it's 10,000 square feet. But that's only if they were going to be subdividing, and those are usually for new lots. What's down there now is kind of grant, it's def, they're definitely grandfathered in.
It's, what, but it can be filled. I mean, what do we have as far as a seagrass survey along that run? I mean, is there something there? There's really nothing there.
Well, and that's part of, similar to the Bed and Breakfast project, they were required in our environmental article, that they had to put a, together a coastal impact analysis. And at that point, as staff, too, before the site plan, we're getting a handle of where the mean waterline is, where the actual water is, is there mangroves, what's there, seagrasses? We usually, they usually work through an environmental planner that'll put together a report for us, which you had gotten from the Bed and Breakfast, so, you know, because it's going to be different in different areas, you know, what they have along the river. So, that's all part of the, you know, what we're looking at when they do come in with the site plan.
Thank you.
This is a brainstorm, anybody else have a storm in their brain? Well, I personally, I think I would like to see the whole thing together, and I know that we have the, the beginnings of, because we do have the bubbles. Gee, I never thought I'd say that and like it, but I do. I, I, I really would think that we could be helped in this project by ideas that come from particularly the landowners. And I know there are some people who may have wanted to do things and have felt that, that nothing, they just can't do anything because nothing fits. I, I spoke with somebody not too long ago, who said they have this wonderful piece of land, and the only thing that you could build there is a pencil. Well, maybe not just a pencil.
Put an umbrella on top.
You can put an umbrella on it and sell shades. But I, I would like, I would like to have some input from, in particular, not, not so much from the people who don't own the property there, but from those who do actually own those properties, what would they like to do with their properties? If there were, and I always look at things with, if there were no rules, what would you do? Because that's how you get the best ideas.
Yeah, I was expecting today, a whole bunch of people here, I thought this was going to be wild, but I guess nobody knows about this.
Well, it was on the agenda just as a discussion, so there was no legal ad, no advertising. You know, the agenda gets posted on the website, but that's, was it, we didn't send out letters. We certainly can schedule what we would call another discussion item or a workshop, and at the direction of the commission, we could put together a mailing list, define, you know, how far, not, certainly not, I don't think, all of the riverfront overlay, but maybe the properties along Indian River Drive. And we could certainly send something out that, at this point, it looks like, too, we're honing in on more of the uses in those districts. Let's get a footing on that, and then get more with the setbacks and, and development, is that how you see this?
I want to see what's even there, all put together first.
And that would be part of our, our discussion, too.
Because right now, excuse me, as I'm looking at the brap here, I don't know if you guys remember a few years ago, that, that, that trailer park, and it's right there. Well, I think the gentleman across the street, well, the guy that owned that lot, he had a piece of parcel, and he built a house across the street from it. So, that's the main concern, that you're going to start having people building houses on the east side of the corridor there.
Now, that particular area, that is zoned RM eight. So, we may, and there's houses, mostly houses on the east side, so we, we may not want to change that in that district, and, and let that be a commercial, excuse me, a residential area. And if there are houses, if there is enough property, I think there were a few on, on the maps, that could have additional houses on the east side, that would be more of your residential area of Indian River Drive. But say we start getting north of the tiki bar, which is where our commercials start, of course, then we have the boat ramp, but north up to Captain Butchers, maybe that's, we can certainly look at the amount of properties that have. I think when you get north of Earl's, there are a few properties that do have some houses that are hidden. And then there's the house on the west side, close to Squid Lips. But we could, there's just a few in that area that we could, we, and that would be the workshop, then, to see if they're okay with not, if taking away that residential use. I don't want to say taken away, but maybe eliminating or redefining a residential use on the east side.
I think, for me, I think more of it is not so much taking away uses as adding uses that we hadn't considered previously. And I, and I know that, I really believe that an addition of some new ideas could in, work to encourage development of some larger projects on the larger pieces of land. But there's a horrendous, a horrendous cash investment that is required before you can do anything at all, and I, I think that we're kind of stymied in the growth area, because it has to be, it has to be huge, it has to be magnificent, it has to be so many things that I think we discourage some development simply because of the amount of investment that's required to go there.
I know some of it is parking, once you start putting in the commercial uses, and based on square footage, it's parking. We, I know we have the parking in Lou, but right now, we've kind of looked at that, okay, if you need more than half of your parking in, your parking in Lou offsite, then maybe this project is too big. But that would be something to look into, that maybe you're okay with a smaller kiosk type of business on a small piece of property, and that you can, through the parking in Lou, but you could get 100% of your parking through the parking in Lou. You're still contributing money into the parking trust fund, so that we can, the city can put in more parking, but you don't necessarily have to have any parking on your, if you're, if you're a lot that's under a quarter acre, or something like that, we could maybe put up parameters that, you know, if you have property that's. We could maybe put up parameters that, you know, if you have property that's smaller and it's going to be hard to get parking, we'll allow a certain size building, and you can 100% ask for an exemption on your parking through the parking in Lou program.
I, just as a suggestion to move things along, if we could, if everybody would agree, if we could ask for the map showing us the bubbles.
Okay.
With what's there. And everybody get your mind working outside the box, and bring this back at our next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Find out exactly what's going, does everybody feel that would be an okay thing?
Yeah.
From our discussion, it appears that there is more of a commercial bubble north of the Tiki Bar. The residential bubble is kind of already established with the RM8.
If they can give us a GIS map showing these same parcels with the zones overlaid on top of them.
That would be fabulous.
Okay.
The shortest person to put this together can probably do it really, really quick.
On the zoning map.
24 by 36 maybe?
Well, we gave you this size in pages for us, for you to be able to at least get, I mean, we certainly could do a bigger map, but then these lots become really, really small. And it was hard for maybe us to put the.
The R or the CWR?
I gotta admit, the city right now is very trapped with our GIS capabilities in mapping. It's whatever we can get off the county website, and Michelle did a great job with our labels, putting them together. But you want the zoning map for at least the Riverfront area.
I mean, if each parcel that we're taking a look at could just have somebody with a red pencil mark it, right on that parcel, so we could, would that work for you?
Same GSI map, where you could cut all these and put it together.
Okay.
Make a bigger map.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the easiest way to do it.
Okay. We'll try and work on that. And then.
Make Dory work again.
Just basically the map or anything else to continue on our discussion? Did we want to make it a, did you, at the same meeting, would you like us to send out letters to the property owners? Are you ready to bring them in, or?
I don't have a problem with that, but I can also see the value in maybe kicking around a few more of ideas.
Okay.
Before we get people thinking, oh my God, you're taking my world.
Yeah, before we bring everybody over here.
Sure.
We won't be prepared for what's going to hit us if.
Yeah, again, I thought we were going to have a melee of people here today as an elbow effort.
There is, with staff, the July 20th meeting was possibly going to be canceled, but August 3rd, we had a site plan. So if that was okay, would we bring that August 3rd? I know Mr. Dodd is hoping to timely bring this through, back to City Council. But it looks like it's going to be the August 3rd meeting, and then we'll get.
August 3rd?
Yes.
Oh, I won't be here.
Okay. We'll try and make, we will do our best to make the 20th.
Unless the 20th.
Okay.
I have a question. In the RM8, are we in a position as part of this to discuss removing a couple of uses there? I was looking at the foster care group homes, and that kind of opens it up to a potential drug rehab situation. And I'm seeing all kinds of very disturbing news accounts on that, and what's happened with that south of us, and the fear that Port St. Lucie was next, and we're not far from there.
If I remember, it's under, the group homes under six is highly regulated with the state, and it's, there is actually is something that we can't zone them out. But if they were to do the substance abuse, the recovery centers that you're speaking of, Mr. Roth, usually there are more than six beds, and that is a conditional use in the RM8. So that would have to come before you. I know there would be conditions, but even through that process, there could be criteria. Certainly could, we could remove that. If we are going to tweak the uses, I'd rather do it all together, because that does involve some state statute requirements when you modify the uses for your zoning districts of certain, two public hearings and larger ads, which we certainly can do, and if that's the wish of the commission. But yes, you can adjust that. Or we can add on additional, which wouldn't require all of the Florida statute requirements, we can strengthen our conditional use criteria.
And just in case you want to worry, there are people shopping here right now who are already appropriately licensed by the state. They're moving here from Dade County.
I think the property though, along Indian River Drive is very, much more expensive than, I'm thinking a recovery center or something similar like that to afford the property on Indian River Drive. But we can, we can adjust that. Or that could be one of the items in our bubble. I'll create the residential bubble along the Riverfront, and that could be a use that could be modified.
Okay. Okay. If everybody's in agreement that we have a semi-plan, we can move to the next item. Which is, ta-da. The recommendation to review CIP.
Does this one work? Okay, I'm comfortable with it this way. I'm Ken Kilgore. I'm the Administrative Services Director for the city, but also the Chief Financial Officer. And one of the things, or one of my responsibilities, is to come before the planning board each year and explain to you what we've got in mind for our capital improvement program. We started this process several months ago, as far as from staff's point of view, what we thought was necessary to incorporate in our planning for the financial needs of capital improvements for the next six years. But this is your chance to kind of get a hold of what we've got in mind and point out any modifications, or things you may think were not stressing enough. It will go forward. This plan is currently, you know, part of the annual budget document that the Budget Committee, and next month, the City Council will be considering before they finally have to adopt something in September, at a couple of those scheduled meetings. But I wanted to come before you, kind of give you a synopsis. I've given you a lot of written materials in your packets, very short PowerPoint, just kind of hitting the highlights. But if you have questions, I'd be glad to attempt to respond to those.
I'll start. I have a, just a general question. In the category description, the term enterprise is used, and I believe that's in the CIP projects, Community Development. What actually is that expenditure? The enterprise?
When we show something as enterprise, we've actually got three enterprise funds in the city. We have the golf course, the airport, and the building operation. So when we refer to enterprise, that's just a collection of those three, what we call funds, is a separate set of accounts that accounts for their activities separately from the rest of the city's general government activities.
That was under Community Development, I believe.
Are you referring to the documents themselves, or the PowerPoint?
Just the term, just the term. What it pertained to, where the funds are going to be used. And I think you answered it, there are three different ones, and then the different categories as to where the funds were going to be used. I couldn't find it in the detail sheets in the back, but that's, I probably overlooked it. But I'm comfortable with what you've said as far as the description on that.
Okay.
Another general question. For example, looking at the fiscal year 1718, under Community Development, there's $110,000 appropriated. And I looked at the detailed sheet, and it didn't equal that number, it equaled 100,000. I just wondered, are all of those supposed to cross-reference? Or were there other sources of funding that made on the summary sheet, made up to that 110,000?
If you refer to the page numbers at the bottom of what you're looking at?
Page 88.
Well, I was going to say on page 87, like under the category of Community Development, you see there's, for the first year, two $50,000 items.
And that's there on the Funding Source page, but on page 88, it shows 110,000 under Community Development. So I was just curious if they're supposed to equal.
No, I see what the $10,000 difference is. Actually, a better breakdown is to look on page 89. And what's referred to on page 87, when it says Community Development, actually refers to the Community Development Agency, which includes the two $50,000 items, plus a $10,000 item to address the tree canopies at Riverfront, Riverview Park.
Can I, can I interrupt you, Mr. Roth?
Yes, I see it there.
In the past, we've had a presentation to us, prepared for the capital improvement, and usually the city manager is here to explain some of these projects. What is the difference? Why the difference? There's a lot of questions. I mean, we can all look at these numbers, but without us reading every page in here, we don't know where all this money's going, unless we start asking a question on air. I have a lot of questions. I'm just curious why the change. I've been to many of these capital improvements, and there's always been a pretty thorough presentation by the city as to what, where the money's going. And I'm just curious as to why the change.
I know the city manager intended to be here tonight, and he texted me before the meeting, said he could not make it. But it's been kind of my responsibility for a number of years now, that I take the lead to do the PowerPoint.
Usually, and then he comes in after.
I mean, sometimes we follow up with, you know, trying to respond to those like operational issues that as a numbers guy, I have no clue about. But be glad to take any questions, and, you know, have him respond at a later.
Maybe we could just go through the presentation and then question.
I'd be happy to.
Like that.
Okay, so. Covered some of this. Just in terms of general categories of our operation, when we refer to general government, in this case, we're talking about our Autovisual Division and IT. We've got over a half million dollars over the next six years. It's essentially for the purposes of staying up to date on our internet and our computer capacities. Police Department, we focus on replacing the vehicles and equipment in that department. There is something that's added this year, there's a deadline, because we coordinate our dispatching with the county, and they've got a requirement to upgrade the radio system by the year 2020. So we have had to add quite a substantial amount to fund what will be needed on our end for that project. In the CRA, the Community Redevelopment Agency, we've got projects to add wayfinding and signage, and to update the CRA master plan. In terms of roads and street work, we've got $501,000 for street work in the, in the plan, and also $65,000 for repaving, or putting in a final paving at the Calphor property. $400,000 for working waterfront Phase III, has actually been budgeted this, in the past year. We've determined to put a hold on that money, can, we'll cancel it out as far as the spending plan for this year, and have it actually scheduled for two years out. We're waiting for, you know, completion of the other activity at that site. And a very large expenditure, $750,000 total spending on the Stonecrop Drainage Project, my understanding is that's a major stormwater facility that we need to make sure works. That $750 is 187,000 of matching funds, our city requirement, and the rest of it is expected to be grant funds. In 2018, we've got $440,000 that includes equipment and just sidewalk work. We also have designing construction of a new, actually, we have design of a new public works compound that would be located at the airport. We've thrown out a $4 million project number, and the design is predicated on a 10% of that, at $400,000 to be funded in next year, followed, in the following years, by a, by the funds for construction. In the stormwater area, we've got $390,000 to be spent in the year 2018, next year. We do our normal piping work and replacement of some equipment, but the big item is funding for a program that we would hope would be introduced to the City Council during next year, that would address the swell areas where there's work that needs to be done, primarily, or generally because of either failing systems or repairs needed to the facilities and the swells. And the expectation is, is it's the homeowner's responsibility, but in many cases, the homeowner is not able. So we, very preliminarily, we are starting to say, we need to do some thinking and planning and work out a grant program, similar to like the subject to sewer program, and the sign, sign program in the CRA area, but something that would come, would be a way to assist the property owners that are, were unable to take care of those swells, because it is a city, it's a system problem. So, you know, if any one part of the system is failing, then it's going to affect other people down the line. So we feel there is a governmental purposing proceeding with some kind of program. But we are very early in the development of that, and it needs to be vetted by, of course, the City Council. As far as Parks and Recreation, we have had for years the Barber Street Ball Field lighting in our capital program. We have got it scheduled now to begin next year. We've run across a need in our playgrounds, as they get older, as they get more use, they need to be upgraded, and the components of those playgrounds can often be replaced, you know, avoid a safety issue or somebody getting injured. So in the past, we've kind of scraped together enough funds to take care of those situations that were brought to our attention, but we want to actually appropriate $25,000 each year to, for that purpose. An American with Disabilities Act playground is in the plan for next year. And I touched on before, a $10,000 a year allocation to do some undefined activity to think about the tree canopy at Riverview Park, and how someday those trees will, as they age, will not be there available for future generations. So we want to start thinking how we can have either replanning or maintenance activity that will address that. At the cemetery, we've got plans next year for a reconstruction, basically, of the irrigation system that's out there. It is aged and needs attention. And also the straightening of headstones. And over the years, there's been, well, there's quite a bit of improvement that we could make there, and we've got what we think is a pretty good quote on going through and getting those headstones and cleaning up the side. up the site. We. Seems with the age of our facilities, particularly this location and next door at the police station, the air conditioning units as they age, they are substantial cost, and it seems like we're getting hit more frequently with those. So we actually like to allocate forty thousand dollars a year. If it's not necessary to spend, of course, we wouldn't, but we want to have that appropriated and ready to go if we have failures or, or maintenance issues. In the fleet management, which is at our city garage, we have seventy-four thousand over the time period to upgrade that. That, of course, would be put on hold until we actually know that we're going to be putting a new facility out at the airport. Be kind of fruitless to go ahead with some of those items. Now, what we call our enterprise fund activities include the golf course. The replacing of golf carts, we went ahead and proceeded just a council meeting ago with replacing the carts that were purchased four years ago. So we've got that approved, we're getting that in place, and we're projecting a five year life of the ones that we're getting. And a financing over the five years, but this shows basically the price that we will need to finance five years from now, which is in the capital program term. And rain fall dispenser is the only other capital item that we've got identified for that operation. In the airport, we're talking about some major money. For the most part, it's grant funds that are in the program or have been presented to the grant, granting agencies, and we think there's a good opportunity to secure those grants. So we've provided for the matching funds, mostly out of the discretionary sales taxes, and have quite an ambitious program there to do some major improvements at the airport. And to just kind of bring it all together and show where the major activities and where we're spending our money. You see in the enterprise fund, there's like forty, forty percent of the capital items because of those grant. Grant financed programs are coming from the enterprise, which is essentially in this presentation, the airport. We are focused on roads and equipment. You see thirty percent of capital items are in that area, as well as the police department at ten percent, stormwater at ten percent, the other activities of the city at a lesser percentage. On the right side of the graphic here, we show where the funds are coming from, and you can see that's essentially grant monies and the discretionary, discretionary sales taxes make essentially, you know, our source of funding. For just about the entire program. Of course, we rely on local option gas taxes and focus all those monies essentially on roadwork now. Stormwater, we're trying to focus that also on activities that the fees were designed to support. We pull out anything that's like a, just a normal operation, maintenance type of activity, and record that in the general fund. But any kind of capital needs, we try to take from the source of funds that the public has gone along with us on and decided that it's willing to pay for. So now I'd like to open it up for any, any follow-ups or any detail, you know, if you reference the page number, I'd be glad to.
That was awesome. That's what I'm used to.
If I don't know the answer, I'd be glad to see it.
Where was that? Thank you.
Well, it's my fault.
But I can start. I do have some questions. While we're still on this slide right here, I'm going to start right away with the airport. The construct shade hangars, is that something we're getting grant money for?
Yes.
It is, what's the percentage on that? I mean, we just designed and built new hangars out there not too long ago. Why all of a sudden do we feel we need to put shade hangars at these hangars?
My understanding, it's a different market. If you've got some.
We're hoping to generate a new, a new tenant that's going to like the shade better. I'm looking at the numbers that it's going to bring, and I, I think that spending six hundred and twenty-five thousand to add shade to some of the existing hangars to accommodate the, I mean, are you going to be able to raise the rent on these? I don't understand that. And another two hundred thousand in 2021.
Yes, and you can see on page one oh seven, we talk about the project that would only be, we'd be using discretionary, discretionary sales tax for the city's matching portion. And next, next year's project would require one hundred and twenty-five thousand of city funds. But we'd spend six hundred and twenty-five thousand on the entire projects. So there, I mean, we've, we have looked at the marketplace, we've looked at the payback, and it makes sense from an investment point of view to.
Well, we're designing a new hangar, right? Two, two new hangars and one in 2019 and one in 2021? Engineer and construct hangars?
We are actually about to open up to the third, you know.
We add hangar, shade hangars, so those, those designs are ready instead of spending another eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. I mean, I don't, I don't get it.
I think it's a different kind of structure.
It's not, it's not a, a retro to the existing hangars, just a whole new hangar?
No.
Because I, I understand it is where they, well, you, you have an air, you have your own personal aircraft, and you're tying that down to the ground, and this is a structure that's going to cover your, it's like a carport at the house. This is going to be like a personalized carport for the personal aircrafts.
All right, so it's a parking spot for the, for the ones that aren't in the, the hangars hangars?
Well, the, the major hangars are actually rented out to people that are in the business of providing, supporting components to airplanes or actually building airplanes. They're not essentially used for, as she pointed out.
Personal aircrafts and stuff like that. I just thought, you know, instead of borrowing two hundred and sixty-one thousand to buy new golf carts, get it out of that hangar money. It seemed like an awful lot of money being spent to provide shade. This is Florida, it's hot.
They'll be, these shade hangars will be rented to people, though. They'll.
Well, we're hoping that, I mean, how many parking spots do we have out there? We're going to construct eight new shade hangars? And how many are rented already out there?
I don't have that number. I know there is.
But the ones that are rented already are really.
They're the ones requesting the shade?
Places of manufacture. These are for.
No, I know. I understood that totally.
But the shade hangars that are there are. My understanding of the information I have is that they are like fully occupied, there's, there's like plenty of market there, market share for us to capture by building the additional ones.
So, let me ask, do we know that in Bureau they have shade hangars or some of the other? And so we're trying to attract some of that business to our airport? It's like we're spending a lot of money on this small airport.
And a big driving.
It's a lot of money.
A lot of money. We've, a lot of projects we've done out there, and I just haven't seen any revenue coming in from it. Sure, a lot of it is from grant money, but just a lot of money. My other question was, the ten thousand they were putting for taking care of the tree canopies at the park, that's trimming the trees at Riverview Park? Does the city do their own maintenance on the park? Do they do their own tree trimming, or do we have a consultant that does that for us?
Well, this, this actually is stemming from last year when Marissa Moore was here, and she was really good with the park maintenance. But she had worked with a landscaping tree person that had came out and trimmed those trees. They hadn't been trimmed for a very long time. And they had mentioned that based on the type of oak trees, that there's a specific lifetime to those trees, and they've been there for a long time, so they just kind of said, you know, in twenty, thirty years, these trees might not be here. So this is a, an addition of funds so that we can begin to start growing and placing new trees. So it's not necessarily, it could involve maintenance, but it's, it's also to add additional trees to the park so that when the current mature trees start dying out, we've got some canopy that's also ready to replace it.
Okay, thank you.
Also, sorry to interrupt, I got a couple of things here because this is really bugging in my mind. Sidewalk construction and repair, forty thousand dollars a year. We hardly have any sidewalks in this town. This is road stripping, twenty thousand dollars a year. Those road strips are in really bad shape. Sign replacement, thirty thousand dollars a year. And then you have a street signage up here on community development, fifty thousand next year, and a fifty thousand the following, that's a hundred thousand. And then wayfinding signage, that's fifty thousand. That's a lot of signage, signage in here, man. I don't know where. I don't, I don't get this. I mean, is this, is this already approved, or are you asking for us to approve this?
No, this is in draft format. We've, we still, you know, we always come by the planning and zoning board to get your input.
I can itemize all these things here, and, and I go around town mostly all day, and a lot of these things are really in need of repairs, in need of stuff like this, you know, like the sidewalks, I don't see that much sidewalk in this, in this city to merit thirty thousand dollars in repairs every year. I mean, there's a lot of stuff here that, to me, it's lame and it's called pork, you know, in other words. But, I mean, I'm not the only one deciding here, but there's a lot of stuff here that is.
I'd like to throw, this was the wayfair and sign in the CRA, the Community Development, was something that was brought by our department, and this is using CRA funds. And it was staff's idea that for as long as we've had the CRA funds in the CRA, the redevelopment area, that we would like to start defining that as a special area. And it's our hope of, of eliminating, maybe tweaking the codes regarding the sandwich board signs and the feather flags, and that what we're hoping to do is some specialized, really nice signage at the end of each of the presidential streets that will direct you to the businesses.
Is that the wayfinding?
With our stop signs and our, our street signs.
That would you call the wayfinding?
Yes, we would have special frames for around those. If you've seen some of the scrolly artwork sometimes on the, around the stop signs.
That's a one-time fee of fifty thousand dollars.
I, I agree with that, that funding because I went on the internet and I looked, and, and that's a forerunner of, you know, making our community look a heck of a lot better for only fifty thousand dollars.
I understand that, but then you have these other ones, it's thirty thousand a year. Let me tell you, when I first moved here in two thousand and four, I remember they used to have signs here, you know, watch for sand hill cranes, watch for turtle crossing, all this and all that. And when I was in the National Resources Board for five years, I asked to have signage, and went one ear and out the other. Nobody, you know, and to me, I feel, you know, it's really sad when you go around those roads and you see these animals, they're dead in the road, and people, they just go by, they just, they don't care, you know, but maybe if they have a sign or two somewhere, they might have a little conscious in their mind to slow down a little bit. Because it's really, I mean, it's sad to see these, you know, like a turtle, you know, just squashing right, you know, over it. I mean, the other day I had to stop, well, we used, a lot of people do stop here, but others don't, they just run right after you, you know, and it's not right. But to see this, all this signage, this signage, and pay for this and pay for that, I don't know, there's nothing out there.
I think some of that is also, though, for some of the older street, street directional signs or stop signs and street signs that get hit or rusted, that's what some of that replacement funds are for correcting.
It's a whole new concept, really, when you look at it. And it really, I think, you know, will lead into our conversation earlier about doing some of the rezoning, or not rezoning, but, you know, redefining of areas. That certainly will help a lot.
Well, and the, the funding for that is CRA money. That's not from the general fund. It does not impact the real estate taxes on every homeowner in the city. This is, if you will, it's like a refund of taxes that we pay to the county that pays for this, it all goes into a fund. And I don't, I don't remember, when does our CRA expire? I think we've only got a few years left on it.
Twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. So it's like, we've got the money, we are, we are required to spend it in that district to improve the district, so I think that's a good use of the money.
The public work mowers, how many do we get for that? I mean, I see we're getting one for the cemetery and one for the parks, or many for the parks? I'm not sure what the thirteen thousand allocates. How many mowers do you get for that?
I believe that is like one mower for, you know, it's a riding mower.
One mower?
Gets a lot of use, like daily.
How many does the city have now? Five?
Five.
How many guys are mowing constantly? Five? So this is just a backup in case one breaks? And then another one the next year, and then I would assume five more the following year? That's a lot of money in mowers.
Crazy.
You got thirteen in 2017, another thirteen in 2018, and then thirty-eight in 2019.
The thirteen thousand is the individual price for the type of mower that we, we use.
The type of properties we're mowing aren't that big, so why are we spending so much money on a mower, thirteen thousand dollars? And why do we need to replace so many every, every year? I'm still mowing what might say mower that I bought thirty years ago almost. Maybe this city needs to look at buying a better mower. Maybe it'll cost you a little more, but won't have to continuously buy them. That's a lot of money. That's sixty-four thousand dollars for mowers.
Dead or being.
And many of our areas, yes, are in desperate need of mowing, which, yeah, let's get some mowers and get them mowed, but let's do it. But sixty-four thousand? Are the five that we have now are in disrepair?
They are, they are scheduled to be repaired or replaced on an ongoing basis. You know, these mowers are used like practically every day, that's possible to get out there and mow.
They need to maintain them a little better because spending thirteen thousand dollars on a mower every year is ridiculous. It reminds me of our quarter round that we don't see anymore on here, where we spent a half a million on quarter round that is sitting in our neighborhood getting buried in every swell. For years and years, we spent that much money, so we need to start looking at this stuff a little closer, not just accept it.
That was a change in philosophy, you know, eliminating the maintenance on the quarter rounds or continuing to install it. I, for one, thought it was a good idea.
I thought it was a great idea. I thought that it was, it never should have happened, but it wasn't done properly to begin with, in my opinion, so it might have worked if it was done correctly.
Anybody else got?
I like the stormwater work. That's, that's great, but maybe we need to throw more money in there.
I have a, just a general question. I'm trying to understand a, a funding source for the golf course, two thousand five hundred dollars. What, any idea what that comes for? I didn't find the, the detail sheet in here. On the, on, on this last page, the capital improvement program, the summary totals of everything, there's a figure for golf course. Funding source, two thousand five hundred dollars.
I'm sorry? Yeah, is that?
It's on this last, the last page. Kind of the summary page you've got here.
And you're asking what specifically that is?
Yeah, where, what's it coming from?
It's coming from the revenues from the golf course. It is for a. A range ball dispenser, to replace a range ball dispenser, it would be funded from golf course revenues. So, you know, like was pointed out before, there are certain pots of money that we have, you know, we spend golf course revenues on golf course activities, we spend stormwater fees on stormwater, we spend gas, gas taxes on gas tax qualified expenditures. But this is one expenditure that was identified in the golf course to come from golf course revenues.
Is there any other revenue from the golf course shown in the, in, in the, in the budget, or this is capital improvement?
The other big part, and the, the other large expenditure for the golf course in terms of equipment needs and replacements are the, the carts, which we've just recently provided for and have that recycled again five years from now. The. The capital for a lot of the recent improvements to the greens that's being worked on now and to the irrigation system this past year has come from the. on now, and to the irrigation system this past year, has come from the, we developed a financing plan basically to borrow against the building fund monies at a, a good rate of return on those monies, you know, from, from their balances in order to do those golf course projects that we have scheduled to be repaid to the golf, to the building fund.
Okay. And this is a capital improvement fund, it's not a general fund?
Yeah, much of the, what you see in here, I mean, there's a very limited amount that it really affects the property tax rate. That, you know, helps support those general fund activities that are, like our police and fire and, I'm sorry, police and public works.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to clarify too, part of the reason this is, the capital improvement program is brought before you is maybe not necessarily to go over the figures and the money part, but as a planning commission, to help recommend the city council with capital improvement projects that you would like to see the money go towards. And actually, in the code, it does say that to prepare a list of capital improvements recommended for construction during the next fiscal year, and the four-year period following it, and then putting a priority on those. And so I think it has evolved where we've brought the whole budget before you, but actually the commission is to be coming up with some of the capital improvement projects that you would like to see added, or maybe an emphasis of money, you know, if you, if you feel strongly on, on road repair this year, or something like that. And this is the recommendation that I think city council is looking to come from the board, from the commission.
I, I am looking at it like that, but we're already borrowing money to buy golf carts, so where are we going to find the money to create new projects?
But I think if there's some sort of emphasis that you see that the city is, is going to need, that even for next year's capital improvement program, that, you know, that's, that's where the budget and the, and the finance department will see if that money's available. But I, I think that's the intent of the capital improvement program coming before the board.
Well, I would like to see more money being used in the swales. I see we did allocate quarter million in 2017, but nothing for the remainder of the, of the fiscal years. So, and our swales are still a problem. I, I see we're putting a lot of emphasis in the airport here. I don't, I don't know if it's generating that much funds for us. I think it's a long shot. There's $800, there's, there's almost $3 million being allocated to the airport for hangar construction and shade.
Well, they are drawing tourism in the form of skydivers, I know that. That plane is up in the air a lot. But that's just one part of it.
I might be, I might be wrong, but I, I believe that, well, I have the belief that the enterprise funds basically support themselves apart from the general budget. Am I, am I wrong about that?
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you. So this is not taking away from the city. These, the enterprise funds, they support the projects that are being done. And if an enterprise fund, it's, if you were to think of it as, as a business, and a business is going to borrow some money to enhance its business, and that business is responsible for paying it back, am I, I, am I right in that?
Yes, and there is an additional nexus there between things that happen at the airport that help develop jobs for the community, and, you know, you talk about having a, a drawing card or something that's going to bring people in, you know, these kind of facilities are, you know, add up to be some kind of economic development strategy. I mean, we can certainly sit back and not accept any of the federal and state dollars that are coming into the airport.
We, we do think...
I don't think that's what we're trying to say. I, it just seems there's a lot of focus on the airport, and...
And not on our roads, and our, our swales. I agree with Mr. Reyes, wholeheartedly.
I think they're two separate things, though, gentlemen. There, if you want more money added to the swales, I think that's a great recommendation, but it can't come from the enterprise fund, if I'm...
It wouldn't be appropriate accounting, right?
I, I don't think we would be allowed to take it from the airport and move it to swales.
Well, I got a whole bunch of places here we could take it out of.
Pardon me?
There's a lot of places right here we could start taking out of. Like computer upgrades, $30,000 a year. For five years, that's $180,000. I mean, there's a lot of stuff here that, I mean...
You gotta build very good firewalls today, though.
Okay, well, that's right there. Firewall software, $75,000. It's there. Plus the computer upgrades, $30,000 every year. Plus this year, Laserfish software upgrade, $50,000. Wow. You see where I'm coming at? It's a lot of, to me, that's a lot of pork money. And we can, I mean, I don't know how far we can go to allocate some of these funds to...
Can I ask a question?
Discretionary sales taxes was funded in the airport here.
This is, this is still put together with an advisory committee, am I correct?
Yes.
I, I think that it would be a good idea for the members who are expected to give recommendations to be alerted ahead of time so that they could watch those committee meetings, and, and maybe there would, because I know these things are thoroughly discussed in detail, and we're kind of coming in at the end of like, this is what the budget committee, who works for months on this, comes up with, and then we're kind of coming in saying...
No, it's true, I agree with that. That's what I said, do we have anything to say here? Because I don't want, I mean...
Well, no, I think it's that, I think maybe we should have paid attention to this before we got it here. But we're all kind of sheep, and if it were, if it was called to our attention, it's like, look, the budget committee is meeting for the next three months, and you guys should pay attention to these meetings, and they're on channel 99, or channel 23, and...
Well, that's all well and good if we're informed ahead of time, but, you know, I spent, I don't know how many hours going over this, and, and I still don't fully understand it, and that's happened every year. So I think some advance notice of either, you know, coming with answers to meetings, or say, here's the schedule of the meetings, you know, if you have concern, interest in it, then you should pay attention and watch channel 99 at this time, or record it and watch it later. That's, I think that's an excellent idea, I really do. But it's hindsight now. We can't do anything.
That's what I'm saying.
I, I think it's a good idea for next year, but I also, I think it's like...
I have a general question.
Who is funding the airport projects? Is the FDOT grant the airport projects? What is funding that?
It depends on the, the project and what it qualifies for. Many times, it would be a FAA, Federal Aviation Authority, or the Florida Department of Transportation.
So it's not out of our discretionary sales tax?
We use our discretionary sales tax fund for the city matching requirements, because often they'll...
But it is coming out of our...
It's coming out of airport, airport fund revenues.
$10,000 is coming out of the airport fund. Right? Is that what the report says here?
Depends on which project you're referring to in the airport.
Would it, would it be all right to ask, what kind of revenues are we generating from the airport right now? Or are we still in the, in the red there? I...
Actually, they've, they've begun turning the corner. They were in the red this year, this coming year's budget. It is a balanced budget based only on airport, well, I say a balanced budget as far as operating the airport, to pay the, the salaries and operational maintenance kind of cost. The capital projects, though, we always have looked and been able to look at FAA or FDOT funding. But the problem used to be, there were no airport funds to match it. So we have started over the last several years using the discretionary sales tax funds to come up with a match, in order to qualify to, to achieve the grant and make the improvement.
We have an obligation to, to run an airport. Otherwise, we have an obligation to run an airport. That airport was not given to us.
And that's why we achieve these, these grant monies, because the grant monies are approved by those agencies with the thought that we will build and make the airport a, a self-sufficient operation. They don't want the programs at the airport to be a burden on any local taxpayers, so they, they're willing to afford the money. We've had quite a bit of...
If I'm not mistaken, the airport and the golf course, that was at one time federal, and it was given to us with the caveat that we must always have an airport here for the general public, if I'm not mistaken. And if we decided that we were not going to do that, then we don't have a golf course either, because it's on airport land.
I don't think keeping the airport open is the question, it's just a matter of where the funding is coming from and, and that.
But, but we need to run it competitively, otherwise it will be a drain on us.
I understand. And I guess my personal concern is that, you know, I'm sitting here tonight, last year the same thing, where we look at this and we're expected to make a decision, but I feel we don't have enough background to really know what we're, one, supposed to be looking at and, and focusing on. And I heard Mrs. Botzler say that, you know, we needed to, you know, pay attention or be aware of the different departments that were meeting, and then also consider what we would want to see focused on in this budget, and add that to it. But I don't think that was ever that clear in, in preparing our minds to come to this meeting prepared to make a firm recommendation. It's, we're, we're looking at it and taking a lot of the surface information that's here and, and accepting it.
I think next year, before they even get into the budget, that the emphasis for the planning board should be that probably in January or February, that we hold a meeting where you come up with your suggestions for your capital improvement projects, and, for that year and the four years out, as the code states. As, again, I think it was a courtesy that the capital improvement program with the financial was brought to you, but I feel like what you're discussing is probably what's being discussed with the budget advisory committee at each of their meetings with regards to where the money is coming from. And I don't think that this is another layer that, that the commission should be doing of, of, again, the monetary review, but more of the project review. And I think if we get to, at the early stages of when this plan is being put together in March and April by Mr. Griffin and, and Ken, that we can then, at that point, have a recommended projects that you would like to see, or emphasis with regards to the development of this, of the city. And hopefully that would get incorporated into the, to the capital improvement program for the five years. If that's something that we certainly can put on the calendar already now, so that come next January and February, you do have a beginning input into this capital improvement pro as the planning commissioners with projects themselves, not so much where the money's coming from and where that's going. Because I don't think that's the layer that this commission is supposed to be adding to this plan.
I think that's a great idea.
Well said.
And I would...
I agree.
I'd be in favor of that.
I only have one other question, that's on the CRA master plan. Is there anything in the works at this point? I know it's listed here. Has anyone been selected? Is there any timeframe for that yet?
No, that's program for next year, and we are getting some more professional staffing that would be monitoring that and, and having the input to whatever consultant was selected to do the plan.
So there'll be a vendor selected again?
No.
It's, it's a 2018 expenditure, so we have to wait till October 1st. We have put into the budget, and hopefully we'll, the additional staff, we're looking to add a community development director, a certified planner to our, our staff. And hopefully with that employee, we'll also be able to then maybe come to the board before we even go out for bid, to see what you want to see in that CRA master plan components. But yes, it's something that then we'll go out for consultant and go for bid.
Okay. So they'll manage it, but there'll be an outside vendor selected, as in the past?
Yes, but it certainly, any type of drafts or things like that would, would come before this commission and also city council.
And that's planned for next year?
Yes.
Good.
I think I like that idea.
Any other questions? If we could have a motion to recommend that the city council act on this?
So move.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we move, that we accept the proposed capital improvement program, be recommended to the city council with no changes.
There a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, very much.
Thank you. Staff matter?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was waiting for you to start.
To you.
Mr. Alvarez, I know that code enforcement, code enforcement did look into your issues with the car, the residents that were selling cars.
What about it? I'm sorry?
The, at the last meeting under your matters regarding the, the addresses on Barber Street. So that was forwarded to the code enforcement officer. I know Mr. Ickini, Officer Ickini was working with them. It was a different resident from the one previous. I didn't get a chance to check with him, but has there been more cars there? I believe he is working on it.
Uh, well, no, I haven't passed by there. I think they're on further down 1860 something is the one that I saw the other day, but...
But it has been forwarded to the, to the code enforcement office, they're working on that.
Hopefully we put a little deterrent on that. Let me ask you, because I saw, what's his name, the barber shop? He's got one of those mobile signs. This guy's something else. He parked his trailer, now he's got a mobile sign that says barber, six barbers for one.
Oh, is that on, on US-1?
No, on 512 inside his parking lot.
Okay, we can have them look into that.
Just put it on again, is that, I mean...
Usually, no, the, the code allows for vehicular signs, which is usually your, your metal magnetic signs that you put on the side of, of your door.
Well, this is, he got a trailer, he parked it in, he's got a huge sign.
Yes, and that's, those are portable signs, and those are not allowed.
I mean, he's got a permit, I don't care, but the thing is that...
We'll have them look into it. I wanted to let you know too, though, July, we are finishing up some staff reviews on some site plans. So probably beginning in August, September, we'll, we'll have more site plans, we've got some preliminary plat, so we've got some actual site development applications that will be coming before you.
Okay, great. Commissioners matters.
No, fine, today.
No?
Done.
Move right on down the line? No? No, no, no.
Do we need to formally ask to have the map prepared for the next meeting to be put on the agenda, or is that already...
No, we do have limited mapping abilities, but we'll do our best we can to put, I think, what you're looking for, and to maybe establish some initial bubbles. I'm thinking, I know it is vacation time, so even if it's a special meeting in between the 20th and 3rd, I'll see if we can come up with that date and email everybody, so we can get the most commissioners that can attend. I know it's summertime, and like I say, vacation time. So I'll send out an email if we can get that week in between the 20th and the 3rd, and see the date, if everybody can verify that that's a good date for everyone. And we could maybe have a special meeting then on that Thursday. But nothing formal that you need, no.
Okay. If there's no other business, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Bye.